Yeah. But I'm not worried about that. It's good for the more than half of the village.
Just tell them.
Everything he said, I know.
That's the one I was saying.
Yeah. It's continuing here.
Okay, so this.
Is this on his, um, for now Jefferson's?
No, we do say that's the one.
Is this what we, of course, we accept this tonight? Or we just gone over it tonight?
No, we had the big supplies.
I know, but I was saying.
Yeah, so it's.
I didn't do my homework on this one, so I'm saying.
You know what happened, you know what happened to this meeting?
I know, right? But I had a good reason I was sick. And I didn't bother with nothing.
About thirty two.
Hmm? Oh, I was pretty good.
You know, I was just rushing the bag. I see you can get out of your hair. You get out. I didn't get any.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
It took that.
I know. Yeah, I know, but I'm not. I ain't.
All right. What I'd say to council public, public hearing, city of Fort Allen Chamber, three seventy five Fourth Street, Fort Allen, Louisiana, third floor, there October ninth, twenty twenty four, it's five thirty four P M. Each person of the side who would even change which agenda they wish to comment on, if they're not CDM chambers when agenda is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter council chamber to address that agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Agenda number one called to order, agenda number two, hand the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Agenda two, go, Paul.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Hubble?
Here.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Reap?
Here.
Everybody speak.
Thank you. Agenda four, public hearing to obtain views concerning a resolution to adopt the adjusted mortgage rates as determined by the twenty twenty four reassessments. General, how do money five point eight six mils, twenty twenty three through to seven point one eight zero mils, and police department four point one mil, one zero zero mils, twenty twenty three to five point zero two zero mils. Anyone from the public wish to be heard at least, this agenda item?
Keep in mind, when you're.
Here, Matt.
This is over here, these people, the public, this thing. Is it?
No one wish to be heard of a close to public hearing? Agenda five, public hearings to obtain views concerning an audit to approve setting the adjusted mortgage rates and roll back forward to the maximum authorized remaining rates for the tax year twenty twenty four for all property subsequent taxation within the city of Fort Allen and following man. General, how do money adjusted five point eight six zero mils to the maximum seven point one eight zero mils, and police department adjusted four point one zero zero mils to the maximum five point zero two zero mils? Any discussion?
So, the, the dollar, you mean, just like, public? Public, yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, the adjusted combined is the nine point nine six zero. Going up to rolling forward that additional two point two four zero we bring in for the combined two villages, a hundred twenty seven thousand, a hundred eighty five dollars and fifty four cents. Uh, for a three hundred thousand dollar property value that I quoted last time, I'll reiterate again this week, for residential, they're assessed at ten percent of the property value, so three hundred thousand would be thirty thousand. And then per one thousand, so this, so you're looking at thirty times that two, two point two four oh, so thirty times two point two four oh is approximately sixty six dollars more in taxes that they would pay based on this rule four.
As my understanding, you would stay with which we have an operating deficit?
We have an operating deficit, our, you know. The budget shows a deficit at the beginning of the year, that's because it's based upon an estimate of sales tax. Now, historically, the sales tax collections have exceeded that amount, but that doesn't do that. And it's just.
You're saying we'll need additional funds for the.
Essentially, this is the only opportunity to roll forward the village without going to the polls because of the way it falls into the reassessment and expiration of the taxes. All I'm saying is that it's a better way to have it or not need it, or need it or not have it situation. Um, now, obviously, you don't have to do this, uh, but on paper, every year, your budget shows a tax. And if those sales taxes don't continue to historically increase, then it could actually be a realized deficit. Additionally, also have to keep in mind that when, when, you know, shares of sales tax, you're borrowing, so as, as population fluctuates, your percentages of the sales taxes come on to match that fluctuation, so. That's the nutshell.
And, um.
Really, I don't mind.
The agent present.
This one's working?
The tax is running, um, around in what areas, like, for, for the, uh, the, I know this would be like a five hour, like, basically, I think we say increase for a month.
Per month for those that are, have a mortgage, because usually the mortgage company pays it on behalf, and they have the escrow account where they're paying each month, so the escrow or mortgage company takes the property tax and divides it by twelve to add it, so sixty six dollar divided by twelve is five something.
Five fifty five.
There's also a three hundred thousand dollar house, and most of the, and that's the value, I mean.
Yeah, dividing it in two, you got a hundred fifty dollars, that's roughly three dollars.
Roughly? Yes.
You know, I mean, like you say, this is an opportunity, and even when we look at that we're not really in a deficit, but this can, I would, this could be a, an opportunity for us to be able to capitalize at this time. Um, but I do want to ask this Katrina, just because she's here, for like, from your standpoint, Miss Katrina, like, how, what's your thoughts on this?
I think definitely things really big increase this, because, um, this, as we said, the budget does show a difference. Um, and it's based on what we predict, so ultimately, we predict we're going to get this is seventy dollars, and we only collect the eight hundred, then it is revenue, however, it's not coming up to what it's, it's not matching what we budgeted. And this will kind of help that difference. Just me.
And I will also reiterate that if the property owner has gone before the West Bay Ridge Parish Assessor's Office, for those that are sixty five and older and have that special assessment of freezing their property values, this tax increase would not apply to them, because they would pay exactly what they paid last year, they would have been getting that tax break with the resolution that we gave. Well, in four, they will be paying exactly what they paid last year, so they're not going to see an increase for those that actually have that special assessment. So, for those that are worried, and talking about senior citizens and their fixed incomes, if they've done what they were supposed to do and got their special assessment at the assessor's office, this would not apply to them.
Good. Allen.
Second, this is, this is a public hearing, so by Louisiana Legislature Department's office, and we have to actually have a public hearing on this rule four outside of the public meeting. We're not voting on this right now, we're just, this is for the constituents of the city to voice their concerns, to you, the legislature, or the legislature department, we have advertised this in the average of twice, the West Side Journal twice, on our website twice, and on these agendas that were sent out.
Now, we still, this is.
Are there questions for the public hearing?
No.
Agenda one, questions for you, for the next agenda, Mr. Brown? Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion?
I say, my motion, my councilwoman, the board, you say, I'm going to. You there, John? Start this here. All right, we go to the regular meeting of the mayor and city council, city of Fort Allen, Louisiana, dates Wednesday, October the ninth, twenty twenty four, council chambers immediately about the public hearing on tax mileage. It's, uh, five forty five P M. Each person must decide before either council chamber, which agenda they wish to comment on, if they're not CDM the council chamber, when the agenda is heard, it will be notified by an officer to enter the council chamber to address that agenda item. Agenda, please silence all electronic devices. Agenda one called to order, agenda two, stand for the pledge.
Yeah, I was.
My pledge of allegiance is simple, high, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Go, Paul.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Hubble?
Here.
Ms. Lacy?
Here.
Mr. Reap?
Here.
Agenda four, full of the minutes of the regular meeting on September eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Allen.
Say. Motion, my councilwoman, Gordon, second. Any objections? Here, Matt.
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yeah.
Mr. Reap?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda number five, public comments, comments from the public are allowed in the court, the weekend advice, as you call it, in section two through thirty four, specifically related to agenda items to be considered during the meeting, three minutes per person and fifteen minutes per topic. For one act to speak. Agenda six, public hearing to obtain views concerning an ordinance to modify certain zoning requirements for downtown mixed use districts. Anyone present for an ordinance wish to be heard on this agenda item? All came forward, opposed to public hearing. Agenda seven, consider approving an ordinance to modify certain zoning requirements of the downtown mixed use district. Ordinance number six, of two thousand twenty four.
An ordinance of the city of Fort Allen providing for the amendment of section two point five of article two of appendix B of the Fort Allen Code of Order, exists in section three point one of article three of appendix B of the Fort Allen Code of Order, and this is related, relative to authorized use of property in downtown mixed use district and to provide a related max.
All right, council members, I think I explained this in last time, so I'll take it. In your package, you have ordinance number six of the twenty twenty four, uh, which was introduced at last month's meeting. Uh, this is one that we had prepared, uh, before the meeting, uh, but after talking to the mayor right before the meeting, uh, we realized that the ordinance, as we had drafted and introduced at, uh, last month's meeting, wasn't going to suffice, uh, because when these properties are subdivided, if they're allowed to be subdivided, they do not meet the, uh, lot size required, it's even for R three, which is the surrounding resulting district essentially for single band of residential structures. So, uh, in front of you, I've, uh, I've given you a copy of, uh, basically an amended ordinance, um, to amend the introduct, to amend the ordinance that was introduced, uh, and basically what the ordinance would do is that, you know, if you're going to allow these, uh, these properties in the D M U to be subdivided, uh, based on, you know, the fact of how these properties are laid out, these trucks, single family structures on these properties, they were already there, they were already in existence at the time that the city adopted its zoning ordinance. Uh, if you're going to go ahead and allow them to be subdivided, they're not going to meet the requirements of R one, R two, R three, we're just going to let them subdivide as, as is, uh, as they lie. So, you know, you're not going to see anything different on the properties when you drop by them, other than the fact that, you know, maybe each of those residences should theoretically be under different ownership, because they theoretically be two separate lines. So, we just wanted to point, you know, bring, that, that's really the change, uh, in terms of the one you have in front of you right now versus the version that was introduced at last month's council. Uh, and under, also under the version that you have in front of you, uh, that, the one, today's version, I'll call it, uh, that any request to subdivide would still have to go, planning and zoning, planning and zoning would still have to make a recommendation to the council, and the council would still have to vote whether to approve it. So, you know, we're, we're providing, I guess, the opportunity for these, uh, individuals to do the subdivision, but at the end of the day, whether the count, whether the city actually allows the subdivision to occur will be, uh, will still be vested with the council, and, you know, we have it where it's sole discretion of the council, so it's not mandatory. You don't have to allow them to do it, depending on, you know, how, what effects the council may concede on surrounding properties.
My first question is, will we, uh, planning and zoning, do we, do we have a recommendation? But then you said it's going to go to them, so my next question will be, uh, you saying if they sell the lot to lots, it wouldn't qualify, it would not, uh.
Is that meet the square?
Right, meet the requirements for R one, R two, R three? So.
They would be smaller, the lot to be smaller.
But it's not in our ordinance.
Right.
Then we have to change our ordinance for them to get this?
That's what we're doing, we're changing the.
You understand, so that, we got to change it for them, then if somebody else come, they gonna want the same too.
Right, so. I didn't pass the law, so I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, but it's always like, like, if I was to buy the lot from, somebody was to buy the lot from me right now, well, after this, they wouldn't be able to build on it according to the code that we have in.
So, it'd be, it kind of, it would be subject to the same thing that these. So it'd be, it kind of, it would be subject to the same thing that these other non-conforming lots, so, you know, we have plenty of other lots, uh, in different areas of the city with a, with a single-family residence on it. Technically, that lot doesn't comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, uh, maybe property setbacks, uh, dimensions of the, of the structure. So that same situation, yeah, we have certain lots where there's a house on it right now, if that house gets torn down on, on that one lot, technically, they can't build another house on that lot because it would, you know, the, the structure would never comply with the ordinance. Uh, so, you know, basically, those situations where they keep, you know, kind of have rehabbing it or modify, or, or, you know, you maintain it, and that's fine, but if you're maintaining it, it will remain, it will remain grandfathered in, but, you know, you do a major repair, you demolish that house. Uh, now, whatever you build back would have to be subject to the current zoning ordinance.
Which would allow something built on something small, so they'll end up with, uh,
Yeah.
just looking for a variance, so.
So the issue you have right now, uh, with the D M U ordinance is that technically, single-family detached dwellings aren't really supposed to be in the D M U, uh, art, in the D M U zoning, uh, district out. But many of these structures were already there, they were replaced though when the city adopted its ordinance, so they've always been non-conforming. Uh, just their presence there and their use as a single-family detached dwelling makes them non-conforming, makes it a non-conforming use. Uh, so the issue though is that you have, on some of these things, you have actually two structures on one lot. Well, the issue is that then only one person owns those lots, you know, they'll never be able to sell half of it if they want to put both lots basically under separate ownership. That, that one lot would have to be owned by one person unless you amend the ordinance to allow them to do so. So amending the ordinance in that situation, you know, it's not changing the fact that, you know, before you amended the ordinance, you have two structures, two single-family detached structures, and then on one lot. You're not increasing that by amending the ordinance here. Uh, you also have the issue that, you know, you're not supposed to have single-family detached in the M U. When you amend the ordinance here, you know, you're not, you're not increasing that, you're not adding what's already there. So all you're doing basically is allowing you to subdivision, or the potential for the council to, uh, to grant a, uh, allow for the subdivision of that lot, what is one lot into two separate lots. Right now, the ordinances don't allow, uh, allow you to do that because you're not even supposed to have, uh, single-family detached dwellings, uh, in, in the D M U district.
Well, why didn't you go before planning and zoning before us?
I don't know if they did or didn't.
I don't think anybody's come before planning and zoning correctly, just trying to modify.
Yeah, but they say, you already go to planning and zoning.
And this is an ordinance.
I know it's an ordinance, but.
Planning and zoning can only make a recommendation pursuant to the ordinance that's in effect.
Okay.
This does not comply with the ordinance that's in effect, so you have to change the ordinance, then go to planning and zoning, and then come back, is essentially what Evan just said. In terms of changing the ordinance to permit something that's currently not permitted.
Maybe you can only do it at all.
And, I guess, I still, just still, because we have the planning and zoning in place. Even though it doesn't, uh, the ordinance isn't there, even, I mean, just to, I guess, maybe to have them to, they input on, on, I mean, that's the reason why they are in place, and now we have, you know, we have the people there, so the process, and, and just being part of this process is very important for us to, you know, these decisions. So I think it's even, I, the same way, the ordinance is not there, but we kind of trying to, you know, change it, but even with them, I'm sure it was something that they could have had an input with, that could come to the council and, and assist, if you, you know.
Totally understood, the problem with that is that, as the, my understanding of what Mr. Alvarez just communicated is that it still has to be planning and zoning after you change the ordinance, and then come back to it. If it's actually done, the problem is, you got to change the ordinance first, so that you can tell it's planning and zoning, the ordinance now allows you to do this, what's your recommendation? And then they come back, but that's just what I heard.
I mean, we just talk to planning and zoning, I mean, we don't remember the planning and zoning, we just talk to them.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with getting their input in terms of changing the ordinance, but as Lance pointed out, you know, planning and zoning is kind of the first level enforcement of the ordinances that's on the books. You know, whether you change your ordinance and what those ordinance are going to be, that's not the planning and zoning function technically, that's the council, you decide your own laws and ordinances, but, I mean, there's nothing wrong asking them for their input either.
I don't think we should change the order for just one person, guess, guess what, we're gonna, we're gonna come up, what we're gonna say.
You're not, you're not changing the order for one person, you're changing the ordinance, but any.
Well, yeah, but.
Any property on, property that has more than, uh, one dwelling on, on that thing, the property.
Yeah, but guess what, if they don't meet the requirement, you change it.
And so, and my thing is, have anyone, have any other residents brought this, up the store, wanted to do it, and, uh, got denied to do it in the past? Had.
Multiple homes?
Yeah, that, that, had this, this situation.
Yeah, it's, 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 my understanding is it will apply to properties, I'm going to take it, but. Then, planning and zoning requests come to me, and as the minister, what I do is, I determine if the request complies with the ordinance. If the request does not comply with the ordinance, then I inform the owner that they can't do what they're trying to do. So essentially, if someone comes in and says, hey, I want to subdivide these properties, they have to subdivide those into two lots that both meet the current ordinance requirements for minimum lot size. And someone came in before this particular issue, and I had to inform them that under the ordinance that's in place, they cannot do what they're requesting. So that's what brings us here, the ordinance has to be changed in order to permit lots that are less than the minimum sized lots that you authorized when, when the council at the time passed the current zoning ordinance. That requires a minimum fifty-foot frontage and a seventy-two-hundred square feet for R three. You can go under seventy-two-hundred only if you create more than fifteen lots, fifteen lots is called a planned unit development, meaning doing a subdivision essentially. And because as a matter of public policy, in order to promote the development of property and to increase, um, stock in, 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 in home sites and homes, a decision was made to allow a smaller lot of six thousand square feet if you created fifteen lots or more. So that's the current ordinance, so when someone presents a request and say, I want to subdivide some property, then I have to determine if, if, if it's legal under the ordinance that's in place. This request is not current, you have to change the ordinance to allow it, and that's what Evan was trying to communicate. You change the ordinance, then they still have to go back to planning and zoning to actually submit what they're trying to do, and then it comes back to the council to approve what planning and zoning, uh, you know. Planning and zoning is not even binding, I mean, their recommendation is, is just that, it's a recommendation the council has to ultimately say, regardless of what planning and zoning does. But in this instance, you can't kind of, you can't send it to planning and zoning first because it can't, it's not legal currently under the ordinance. So it has to be legal first before you can go to the next step.
And just reiterate.
We have to change the ordinance of it, and the reason why the ordinance was put in place in twenty sixteen for to meet these specific requirements. But when we change the ordinance, it, this, they, they won't meet these requirements, so this is, so I'm saying, in the future, what effect would this have on us if they're not meeting us, that, that they not meeting us specific requirements that, that was, uh, stated in the original ordinance, and I'm sure they created this ordinance in, in those requirements for a reason, to meet, to, to meet the standards of the criteria.
So this is the, uh, D M U, uh, districting which, you know, really, I guess, in D M U, you know, you're not supposed to have single-family residents, I guess, was the goal. Now, the reality is there was tons of single-family residences that were there before, and of course, they're going to be permitted to remain there. Uh, and this is an example for, you know, a case where you had two, two residences on one lot, and like, should have never been allowed back whenever it was, but it was, so you got two residences on one lot. So you, you have two issues here, one is you got two residences on one lot, which that should have not been allowed. The other issue is you have two buildings on a lot, each of which are being used for single-family detached residential. And the issue with that is you can keep doing it because you were doing that before the ordinance came into effect, um, but technically, it's a, it's a non-conforming use, but it's a grandfathered-in non-conforming use. So actually, in this situation, you kind of have two, two issues, where it doesn't comply with existing ordinance, again, but this was all before the ordinance, though, how the property's set up. By actually allowing a subdivision, in this case, you're actually fixing one of the two problems, because if they're allowed to subdivide and now have two separate lots, with each lot having a residential structure, you've actually improved the non-conformity to an extent because now you don't have that issue where you have two residential structures on one lot, you have one residential structure on one lot, and another residential structure on one lot. So you've actually solved one of the two problems, in terms of the other problem is that, you know, you're not supposed to have single-family detached, uh, residential dwellings in the D M U in general. Yes, you still have two of them in this situation, but it's the same two you had that's been there before the ordinance came into effect, so you're actually not increasing that issue. That issue that's been grandfathered in, you're not increasing it, so, you know, again, nothing is changing, nothing about the physical, you know, lot itself, that when you drive by and you see what's on there, you see what it's used for. None of that would be changed or affected by passing the ordinance. The only thing that you're allowing them to do is basically, in the assessor's website where it shows your legal lots, there'll be two lots there instead of one lot, and each of those lots could be under different ownership.
And we would, we would still, even if we were to pass this, we would still hear each case or whatever, on a ca, each instance, request on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, yeah, but again, we, we, I, I put that in this, this version of the ordinance, that if any request, I, I'll read it for the word, uh, the second part of it, any request to subdivide the lot shall be submitted to the city's planning and zoning commission, who shall provide a recommendation to the council, the council shall have sole discretion to approve or reject the property owner's request to subdivide.
But I'm saying, even then, what would I would the sense be to do that? Like, even if we go on case by case, okay, we'll do this, yours on this, my on this, what's the baseline, like, unless that, that ordinance, I could give you your criteria, so if, if we doing it case by case, because now we just created another ordinance, and it could, they could get smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller, like, like, you know, so, I'm just, and then what do you say, oh, you did it for that one, or mine, just a little smaller, you could do it for me, so it's like, where I would base that?
Well, there is, and, I mean, you're still losing point because you're only talking about buildings that already existed, you're not talking about new development. You're not talking about somebody who want to put an additional building on a lot.
Yeah, and this is limited, I'll, I'll read the first part, "In the event a lot located in the downtown mixed-use district contains two or or single-family detached dwellings, which dwellings legally existed on said lot prior to the time the city adopted its zoning ordinance on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, a property owner of said lot may request that he or she be allowed to subdivide the lot." So again, you know, we're talking about, you know, these buildings, they have to be on that lot and existing prior to when the city adopted its whole, you know, zoning, zoning mechanisms. So again, you know, it's a pretty limited subset of criteria to, uh, to be eligible for this, and again, I, I think there's only, what the mayor said, maybe two properties? Or maybe a small handful of properties in the D M U district that, you know, this would even be eligible, uh, following the criteria here.
But legally, they could be done, we could do this without any.
I don't, I don't see any prohibition to allow it, I, again, because, you know, what, what it is, is it's just reflecting, uh, you're reflecting, you know, what was already in place prior to the, uh, prior to the city zoning structures coming into place. And again, because this is what existed prior to the whole zoning ordinance, you know, nobody's can say, well, I did something here or there, uh, based on, based on, you know, what was existing, or, or based on, something like this would never be allowed to happen because it was our, it's been, it's been two residences on there, uh, you know, since, before the zoning ordinance came into play.
And it just pertains to the D M U, correct?
Yeah, that's, it's only in the D M U, this, this right.
And I guess that would be my question, if you, if it like that, then just, why do you want to just challenge it?
They, I, I, I mean, the motivation, or?
Well, I mean, the, the object is, is, is if they want to sell one house, against, they have to sell both houses, that's, that's the hope there. If you sell it the way it's supposed to be, then you will sell each one of them.
But they still on the same property, you're right.
No, you, ma'am?
They would still be on the same property, they sell one house and then they sell another house to two different people, their family?
Because you can't subdivide the property, and you, you have to sell all, both houses at the same time, this one. If you got two houses on one property and you sell the property, you have to sell both houses.
No.
They would only own the house and not the land.
Correct.
So they have to buy. Subdivide.
It's two real properties and part of another house.
Yes.
Take it. So basically what happened is, picture, just, picture a lot, two lots that form a team. One fronts on one street, the other one fronts on the side street. Property owner has a house on Jefferson, but they also own a lot on George, those two lots do this, okay? The house on Jefferson has portions of its outdoor area on the rear half of the Georgia Street lot. But it also has two homes on the front of that lot that face Georgia Street, so you got two of them properties and like, uh, say, a outdoor kitchen and a pool and a backyard, and then you got a whole other house on Jefferson. Make sense, if I agree with you?
Hmm.
All right, so, the problem is, because of, because of the construction that's taking place, when all of that property was in the same ownership, you can't separate those three properties under your current ordinance, because the two properties that are on Georgia don't comply with your minimum requirements. So, yeah, all of this was allowed back at some point in time, can't say when that happened, but as it stands, if someone wanted to purchase, say, the house on Jefferson, they got to buy the house on Georgia too, because half of the house on Jefferson is on the Georgia lot.
Correct.
But it's not technically a portion because they owned it all at one point, so the same person owned all of them, that's the only reason they were, they were able to do this. But you can't split the ownership now, because under your ordinance, every lot created after April of twenty sixteen has to meet certain conditions. That's the whole purpose of the zoning ordinance, that's why, um, keep in mind, the zoning ordinance was an amendment, it had a zoning ordinance, ordinance before that happened, it just contained different requirements. So in, 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 in order to do that legally, you cannot, you cannot legislate a property out of commerce. So what happened is, you created this concept called lots of record, meaning that any property that was in existence at the time the ordinance was adopted can stay in existence like it is. Okay? But in the event that that property, um, in the event that something happens in, 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 like, I guess. like, I guess, the early hypothetical, if a property, if a house burns down, then if that's a single lot of record, they can still rebuild on that lot according to the lot of record conditions, right? Because it was a lot of record when your ordinance came into effect. The problem is that you can't create a lot now. Because it didn't exist at the exception of the new ordinance. So anything that happens from April twenty sixteen going forward has to comply with the new ordinance. For lots, structures, setbacks, and the whole nine. That's why we've had to do so many variations of laws. Because those are properties that were already in existence. So they were never subject to the current conditions. But as soon as you try to change something, it's not going to be considered legal if it doesn't comply with your ordinance. So you either, you have two options, you don't do it, or you change the ordinance. They're asking you to change the ordinance so that you know. That's bare bones, basic explanation.
And some say, trigger my mind, if we don't do it, then we're blocking them out of commerce because they cannot actually market the property or, or property if they wanted to sell one.
Well, that's correct. But keep in mind that, that statement was made in the context of when the ordinance was, was, was passed, all right? So currently, here's the main problem, as, as an administrator, it's totally impartial. It's, it's not going to change, like Evan said, anything you say to the census. The main change that you need to be concerned about is that once this subdivision takes place, those two lots are going to be roughly twenty-five hundred square feet. Oh, not even close. That's, that's the issue. Because that's the only way that they can subdivide. Because the, because the back, the rear portion of those lots was taken for construction project associated with the property on Jefferson.
That's not even true, right?
I think, I think that's my concern.
I, 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 I'm just saying.
That's not even a compromise.
These are just fact, these are just the facts. I'm not getting into this all day. I'm just telling you that, at the end of the day, that's the main issue. That's why you have to pass this ordinance to make a lot be allowed to be smaller than what your ordinance is. I'm just trying to explain it in a way that's makes it a little more easier to comprehend when we come into it. That's it.
Thank you, ladies. And, and I really want to let you know that you are valued with height, with the information and the knowledge that you have.
I appreciate that.
Like, really, you are. I don't think I would have understood it probably any other way different.
I do my best.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question? Well, Mr. Lacy is not complying now, so, you know, all you do is subdivide your lots so that they can sell it in the future or after you're old.
I mean, it's not complying now because it was, that, it was, that, that was there before twenty sixteen.
So what, so what you're saying is you can tell a homeowner, do you take the old houses there? Because it's not a complaint?
No, I'm saying, look, it, 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 that, 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 I mean, twenty sixteen was like that already.
That's, that's what the question.
So, but if we want to change it, we still want it to be, I mean, be compliant, if that would have been, the case, we can't change something that's already had, that was already done, that was done. So for past twenty sixteen, they could, or that, that...
And, and you said exactly what you meant, you're not changing anything. Nothing on that, just like Mr. Everett says, when you drive on that street, you gonna see the same two houses. You're not changing, you're not changing that property.
I said, we're being, you know, compliant, but it has been took in place since twenty sixteen, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. So what you're telling is that you need to go and tell this, I know, at least tell the property.
No, they're gonna let us know.
No, I'm trying to say that's what we need to tell them.
Yeah, they would have asked before we got out.
What we're going to look like, what we're going to tell them is they request, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I, I'm trying to tell that out. I can't tell them to tell y'all, so, but it's a possibility. Would they ask them for what you're going to do, and we have to tell them that.
So I guess, the assessor, how does the assessor assess that property? By those houses being all on one lot, or?
I mean, they, they just continue to do what they've been doing. However, the lot, however the lots are drawn and all, that's just how they would remain.
Right. And each one got their own address and L?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what it is.
I mean, what, what, what y'all, what y'all thinking, what y'all, just up there?
Yeah, that's too, too small of a lot size.
Just a little, a little pantry.
We're going around and around with this thing, this is the same thing.
And I just want to add a little pantry because I think it might help. Look, you got a lot of lots that are not compliant. That's, no, that's, that, you can't avoid that. At some, one point in time, twenty-five foot lots were compliant, right? Now, the way to try to address that is if you own two twenty-five foot lots together, you gotta use them as a lawn. That was a change made by the new ordinance as well. Because your new lots have to be at least fifty feet. So if you own two twenty-five foot lots outside, outside, you better have to use them together. But I did get a request a few weeks ago from a person who owns a twenty-five foot lot on Kentucky Street. She wanted to put a tiny house on it. You know, how, you know, current, the tiny houses are the, are the rage now, people are decreasing their footprint. And it was some real nice tiny houses available, but the ordinance also was wide enough, about this square feet. So I had to tell them, I'm sorry, but you can't do that. So you gotta kind of think about all of those different variables, right? And how they kind of relate, and, and, and what happens when, you know, you can't kind of think about this in terms of today or tomorrow, you gotta think about year ten, year fifteen, year fifty, you know? And so, look, it, 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 it won't change anything visually, it won't. And, but it will establish two very small lots. And I think you have to at least understand that. And that's the, I mean, that's the only reason that an ordinance change is required, because your lots have to be a certain size, and your structures have to be a certain size. And just think about it like this, the, the ordinance that you all are interpreting and making decisions on, and planning his own matters come to you, it only applies from twenty sixteen to four. Anything new, anything that existed in twenty sixteen can stay in the present shape that it's in, and, and it doesn't have to be retrofitted or whatever to, or upgraded, whatever the case may be, to, to come into them lives. You couldn't do that. But you gotta kind of look from twenty sixteen forward. This, this, this is not permitted, that's why I had to come to you first. This was brought to me in the beginning, and it was like, okay, there's no way you can do it under the current ordinance. So you either leave it like it is or you change the ordinance. It was one of two options. That's where you go.
Any other discussion? Not, we're gonna thank them.
So from my understanding then, right, if we were to pass this, create two twenty-five hundred square foot lots on last night?
Yes.
Two twenty-five hundred square foot lots?
Well, I, you're gonna change it on, I would change it on.
They're just two very small lots. I don't, I don't know the, I don't have the square foot, don't it? But it's just, it's two very small lots.
Yeah, twenty-five.
For both or just one?
For both.
So it's five thousand square feet?
Twenty-five.
So, pardon, sorry, twenty-five for both or five thousand? I mean...
Or like in the, the corner of the yard, you have to set the joint up, and these are the two houses.
And the frontage for those two is given to you?
I'm not sure. But, so if you divide this in two lots, you know, you got, yeah, very small lot.
My slit is the lane.
So counsel, what they, uh, what they also said was that, uh, the D E S part is come up before the council, it's up to y'all to decide what you want to do and not to be trying to narrow it. Do not, you can bring out you do not. The ordinance is to establish requirements, you know, because they can, they request, you know, what they want, and still up to y'all, y'all want to prove that's it.
You know, I, I could almost see, yeah, pass this ordinance, but if somebody comes to us, you know, where they're subdividing something where you might create two five thousand square foot lots, I mean, I know you're, but twenty-five hundred square foot lots, man, that's pretty much what you have to make already.
You don't have the square footage by...
Well, the lot, like I said, the lots are a little bit, that, the address that brought this before us, it's four thirty-nine Georgia Avenue. The entire lot is ten thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet. It's point two five two zero seven nine eight, okay? Now, it, it's, it's two forty-five, it goes ninety feet front by a hundred and twenty deep, all right? So think about it like this, that hundred and twenty would have to be split in roughly half. Because the back half contains construction that goes to the Jefferson address, which is five twenty, Mark Jefferson. That's what I'm telling you, see, the lots, they meet in the L shape around the corner. One front's on Jefferson, one front's on Georgia. So in order to, 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 to keep the portions of the construction that go with Jefferson on the Jefferson property, you gotta draw that line at halfway, the Georgia property, right there? So once you draw that line at halfway, you'll have two lots that front Georgia, and they'll be roughly forty-five by sixty.
Yes.
Give or take. I can't tell you because I don't have an actual survey to say exactly where that line has to be, but I can tell you it's roughly half of that hundred and twenty feet is going to stay with the Jefferson address. And then you're gonna have two lots on Georgia that are forty-five feet front and about sixty, let's say fifty to sixty feet deep. So at, at the most, they're going to be about twenty-five hundred square feet. And I said, that's just a bare fact, that, that can't, that's, 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 that's no opinion whatsoever, that's just fact, okay? In order to accomplish the goal, because I don't think anybody really has any opinion on it or nothing, it's just, hey, this is what you have to do to make it happen.
And the flip side, that is anything in the DMU, once it reverts from residential to commercial, you know, there are no setbacks.
There are no setbacks.
So, that... So once these houses don't become, uh, 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 not residential, you know, that, not a residential property, I'm sorry.
Yeah, DMU was a limited, to attach and up and forward the dwellings.
That's why I say this is different from any other portion of the city, because this is just for DMU downtown, this, 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 I like this, that, or street, or fourteen street, this, this downtown, this, this is... But it's saved in the yard. So, do we have a motion before?
If you have a pledge, okay.
A motion? Fail. Move on. General Alomond, number eight. Public hearing to claim views concerning a resolution to adopt the adjusted milch rates as determined by the twenty twenty-four reassessment in Italian. General Alomond, five point eight six zero mils, twenty twenty-three to seven point one eight zero mils, police department, four point one zero zero mils, twenty twenty-three to five point zero two zero mils. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this adjutant? No one answered, close the public hearing. General Alomond, considering approval of the resolution to adopt the adjusted milch rate as determined by the twenty twenty-four reassessment. General Alomond, five point eight six zero mils, twenty twenty-three to seven point one eight zero mils, and police department, four point one zero zero mils, twenty twenty-three to five point zero two zero mils.
Counsel, this is keeping the tax as is, so there's no change, um, I think that's what we're saying in the text, right? Am I correct, babe?
The resolution is keeping the rates the same so that the tax that, that the income you get is exactly the same as previous years. So as far as the resolution, you're not changing anything related to your budget. And a resolution requires a simple majority. And before you want to nail that we have the public hearing prior to that, because I could have ordinances, we operate under, require our public hearing to be within our public meeting, losing legislature, parliament requires a public hearing to be outside of the public meeting, which is why we had it first, operating under both sets of guidelines.
So this, this, this one is, this one you have to do, uh, this is just to simply recognize, you know, the assess, they have reassessed, and because of that, there's new villages that, you know, the assessor has, you know, basically calculated. So this is basically to recognize the new assess, the new villages based upon the reassessment done by the, uh, by the assessor's office.
And of course, this is something we've got every year with the tax.
Say. Got a motion by Councilwoman Lacy, second by Councilman Brown, and the judge, you hear her now?
It's Brown.
Yes.
It's Lauren.
Yes.
It's Hogue.
Yes.
It's Lacy. Yes, this is repair.
Yes.
Close your desk.
General Alomond, public hearing to obtain views concerning an ordinance to approve the setting, the adjusted milch rates and roll forward to the maximum authorized levy rates for the tax year twenty twenty-four for all properties subject to taxation within the city, aboard all in the following manner, General Alomond...
of Port Allen in the following manner, General Alimony, adjusted five point eight six zero mils to the maximum seven point one eight mils. Police Department adjusted four point one zero zero mils to the maximum five point zero two zero mils. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda?
Would you like me to repeat, rest in the public here, it's just part of the public record for the public meeting? The roll forward is a
This is the public hearing, come back, what? No one can add it?
No one came forward in the public hearing, or closed the public hearing. General Alimony, considering approval and ordinance setting the adjusted mill rates and roll forward to the maximum authorized levy rates for the tax year twenty twenty-four for all properties subject to taxation within the city of Port Allen in the following manner. General Alimony, adjusted five point one eight six zero mils to the maximum seven point one eight zero mils. Police Department, adjusted four point one zero zero mils to the maximum five point zero two zero mils. All right, uh, combined roll forward, wait, hold on, my mistake. Order number seven, twenty twenty-four, please.
The wording may have changed a little bit during the day, I mean, we can read what we have, um, we have something that's changed a little bit on our ordinance. We have orders of the city of Port Allen, setting the adjusted village rates and roll forward to the maximum authorized levy rates for the tax year twenty twenty-four for all properties subject to taxation within the city of Port Allen in the following manner. General Alimony, adjusted five point eight five nine mils to a maximum seven point one eight zero. Police Department, adjusted four point one zero zero mils to a maximum five point zero two zero, and of course, it's for end-related matters, that's my list.
So the, the only thing that I added is just to read the order, being ordained by the city of Port Allen, which is located in the parish of West Bath Rouge, Louisiana, in a public meeting held on October ninth, twenty twenty-four, which meeting was conducted in accordance with open meetings law and the additional requirements of article seven, section twenty-three, city of Louisiana constitution, and LARs forty-seven, colon seventeen oh five D. The city of Port Allen, listed the village rates, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable properties shown on the official assessment rule for the year twenty twenty-four. And when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied, said village rates are, and as Ms. Richie just indicated, uh, indicated, the village rates. We have further ordained that the assessor of the parish of West Bath Rouge shall extend upon the assessment rule for the twenty twenty-four, for the year twenty twenty-four, the taxes levied, period levied, and the taxing pleasure of said parish or city shall collect and remit the same to said taxing authority in accordance with law. The foregoing ordinance was written full, the rule was called on the adoption thereof, and ordinance was adopted by no less than two or three membership of the taxing authority voting in favor as required by Article seven, section twenty-three of the constitution and by statute fourteen, colon, seven oh five D. The votes were as follows. So that is the draft ordinance, uh, that you have, that you have.
The combined roll forward is two point two four zero mils that we're rolling forward, if y'all have agreed in additional revenue combined for both of those villages, a twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
I'm sorry.
Two point two four zero mils combined for both of them, the combined revenue, additional revenue, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. Which equates for someone whose property, residential property value of three hundred thousand dollars being assessed at ten percent value, which is thirty thousand, thirty dollars times a two point two four oh, roughly sixty-six dollars, that's in mark cents, additional that they would pay with this bill in part that they would not have paid last year.
Annual.
Annual.
And you, like I said, how many three hundred thousand dollars? So, I guess the better number would be like one fifty-ish, just to throw that, so it would be two dollars and seventy-five cents a month, whatever that comes up to, thirty, less than thirty-five dollars a year.
Correct. And again, to generate those that have their property values frozen, age sixty-five or better, older, they would not be subject to this increase, they would be trying to give or take a penny for they paid last year in property taxes.
And if you don't have those that haven't done it, then they would, they would apply. But for someone who may be interested, just saying, who hasn't done it, like I say, for somebody, how do they go about doing this?
That I, you have to go to the assessor's office, I don't know exactly all the protocols, so they would be going to the assessor's office. I know that even after we mailed out the tax bills last year, I got revised information from the assessor's office in January or February that I had to keep revised tax bills because they went before the assessor's office, or they reached a tax commission, or the assessor's office for information, and got their property value reassessed even after the tax bills, that something changed on the thing. I don't know if that's applicable for sixty-five or if they can retroactive it. And that is a parish assessor's question that I'm not getting this from now on.
And there is certainly, I guess, criteria. Your adjusted gross income has to be less than one hundred thousand for America. Yeah, I mean, it's
You have the information.
My jurisdictions pretty much take the fact that the assessor gives me or any of the revised information they give me and regenerate through our software the new tax bills, so. Procedures and protocols, the requirements. Don't, I don't want to give incorrect information when they're asking me how to always direct them to the assessor's office. Because statutes change all the time, so.
And I, I understand, I just want to, you know, have the necessary information, and if it was something that, uh, like someone sixty-five or older, don't, you know, don't have theirs not frozen, and, uh, they didn't know that they could do it, and and it's our responsibility to do it, they have to, to, uh, make sure that they go through the process of getting that done. Because I was seeing, I was seizing citizens to know they had it all. And so whatever we can do to take some of the weight off of them, we wanna make sure that they have the information that they need.
Perfectly, I'm assuming.
Thank you.
I move.
I stand.
Motion by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Lacy, Ms. Jackson. Here or not?
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Also, Percy, from more than two hours.
General Alimony, considering approval and following thank you for employees, Charisse D. Jackson, five year enrollment, or two F C, two one two F D. Eric Jackson, completed training and performance evaluation for certified gas operation operator, one oh nine C, two one oh nine D. Frank Samuel, four, completed six months probationary period as a full-time laborer, one, from one oh one C to one oh one D. And Troy Allen Lewis, completed six months probationary period as a full-time laborer, one, from one oh one C to one oh one D.
The individual together?
They're all together.
I'm making notes.
Amanda, moving closer.
I'm very proud of them.
Yeah, like, for the certification that we need at these departments, do you see where Mr. Jackson may be kind of moving? Um, so closer to, to maybe, the one that's probably not be closer to the, those certifications that are here. He's out right now, and I don't know the terms of.
With Sir Eric Jackson, he's got his book, uh, of trying force with Louisiana Rural Water Association, so. Say, what can they get back from him?
Taking a motion.
I, I got a motion by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilwoman Gordon, any objections? Here or not?
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Hubble?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
General Alimony, thirteen, considering approval of the monthly financial report.
Good evening, Councilwoman, my apologies, I was not here last week, but I have put the report in front of you all. Um, because everything looks good, there's one item that is over twenty-five percent, and that would be the sanitation on page two. That is twenty-eight percent. And we are paying out of pocket some for sanitation. So that's why that is like that.
You said the city paying for the sanitation?
Yes. Because the price that we're charging our customers is not previous to what we have.
Garbage?
Yes, garbage.
Yeah, that was discussed by contract. So, I mean, I acknowledge, uh, whatever, but, uh, I'm moving, uh, we can't.
I just wanted to bring that to you, but everything is, and. It's like, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The city is picking up the, the rest of the money that's, that the home.
That we're paying for the garbage, because what we were charging was not sufficient for the residents.
Probably on the contract.
Yes, you break it that way, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Counsel, what happened is that the, they had a, they had a, what's the time, increase? And that increase didn't take effect until.
The increase in, in the charges took effect before we increased the charges to constituents.
So it's just reflecting in the funny.
Okay, that's not, that's, that's.
It's not American, correct?
Yeah, okay.
That's, that's the only thing I wanted to point out, everything else looks good.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, General Alimony, fourteen, any foundation to see?
Do you wanna vote on thirteen? No, I think, maybe you have it as considered, approving.
Say.
Yeah, motion by Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman here, any objections?
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
This thing.
Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
I have fourteen foundations to see.
That's all there.
I have fifty, I know that's a little bit. I have sixteen announcements across the limits. I have seventeen.